Entertain a motion to open the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Kevin Mello.
Yes.
Margaret Sweet.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
And Kevin Estes, yes.
Okay, and then the only thing that we want to say to the public is that this meeting is being recorded by DCTV.
Okay, it's seven to seven PM and this meeting is being recorded by DCTV.
Okay. And then we want to go into administrative items and the first item is the election of board officers and other appointments. You have in your packet. The appointments or the volunteer things from last time. Biggest thing for this evening, obviously, is the Chair, Vice Chair and the Clerk for this coming thing. And then I don't know if you want the other appointments to remain the same way they are, other than anything Chris had, or if you want to reappoint each thing. So you you all can decide that. So Kevin, you should probably ask for those things to begin with.
Okay, so obviously, we we need a chairperson. Is there anybody that that wants to throw their name in in the ring for for the Chair?
I think you're looking for a nomination.
Yeah, so I I'll I'd like to share a few thoughts if it's okay. And with all due respect, Kevin Estes, you're my priority at the moment because you currently have and hold a position. Are you interested in staying where you are? Are you looking for a change?
I am looking to stay where I am as Vice Chair.
So with that in mind, I'd like to nominate Kevin Mello as Chair.
I'll second.
Great, so let's have a vote then. To nominate Kevin Mello as excuse me, as the Chair. Nick?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Kevin, can you vote on this?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
But you could also say if you don't want it, but yes.
So, yes.
All right.
Frank in numbers tonight.
I will also vote vote yes for Kevin. If we're going to retain a seat, well, I'll entertain if somebody else is interested in in the Vice Chair. Any other nominations in the space of it, I will retain that.
So is there a nomination to keep Kevin Estes in his position?
I'll nominate Kevin Esten for Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay. In in motion to nominate me as Vice Chair, Margaret Sweet.
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Kevin Estes will vote yes. And the Clerk?
I'd like to stay there. That way it's easier for Christine. She doesn't have to change the stamps on the letterhead.
I nominate Margaret for Clerk.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Nick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I also vote yes to nominate Margaret Sweet as Clerk.
Very good. All right. And then for appointments. So Serpide was the Serpide Commission was Chris O'Neil. So that one, obviously, we have to appoint somebody. Margaret was the alternate on that one. I don't know at this point if they meet in person or if they just still meet remotely. Or I don't know if you want to go through all of these this evening, like you said, or you want to to just hold off on this piece of it. It's up to you.
My my thought on this is that before we start divvying up too many of these unless there's something that's urgent. I my thought is that we should fill the board first, fill the vacant spot. Because based on who that person is, it might make sense to get them into one or more of these.
Good point, Kevin.
What are your thoughts?
I think that's a good point.
Yeah, that that really does make sense. The as I look down.
The not sound so surprised please.
No, no, the the only thing that would be a concern like Serpide, if there's a meeting that's very important, we have Margaret as the backup. The only thing we don't have a backup for is Charter Review. So Christine, if something comes up for Charter Review, will you be notified?
So I I don't know if they have a meeting scheduled anytime soon, but I know that there are a number of items that will be on the the Spring Town Meeting warrant that are coming from Charter Review. So I think it's important that we have somebody for that. I don't know if I'm allowed to sit in and listen on that. I don't know if you have to actually appoint somebody, but because of there are all of the things coming up on Town Meeting, it might be wise to have somebody for that. So even if it's just a temporary position, it's up to you.
Do they still have time to to post something?
For town meeting? I I don't I don't know what they're what, like I said, I don't know what the meeting schedule is. I didn't think to ask Chris of that. I don't think they'll be posting anything new. But I mean, it might be wise if they have to go before the Finance Committee or before the Select Board or anything else, you know, anybody else to have somebody from the Planning Board sitting sitting in that. You're not going to change anything that they've already suggested and prepared, but just to listen to the rest of it.
Got it.
I'd like I'd like to share something, Christine, if you don't mind, you know, directed towards you so that you can direct me or help. I have some flexibility on Tuesdays and Fridays. My Monday, Wednesdays and Thursdays are mostly inflexible. My point being for Charter Review or Serpide, I'm happy to be an alternate or split it with someone specifically. If it falls on those days, I'm happy to be committed. I'm just leery to be on it by myself only because of the inflexibility I have on Monday, Wednesday and Thursdays. So if I can be an alternate with someone or work with someone, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so I don't know that they have a set date that they meet or anything. That I don't know. I I guess what I would say is if nobody else wants to take it on, I mean, we can say that Nick is going to be the alternative and if and if we run into a conflict with the the days that you're not available, if I can sit and listen and then report back to you. I don't I don't know how that'll work exactly, or if there's somebody else that wants to split it with Nick.
I'll split it with with Nick in in as an interim thing and what what we can do is is kind of play it the same way where you know, let's wait, fill the vacant spot, and then there may be some reorganization that goes on.
Fair.
Good. Okay. All right, so I will I will notify the Select Board.
We're talking about the Charter Review only.
Yes.
Charter Review only.
Margaret, with with that in mind, I'm willing to apply my name similarly to Serpide with you. Again, schedule driven, but if it works and I'm available and it's easy, I'm happy to get involved.
Okay, good.
I I believe Serpide, Margaret, is Serpide normally Monday afternoon evenings?
It's in the evenings. And it has been Zoom. It has been.
It has still been Zoom. Wonderful. Okay. Excellent. Okay.
Okay. All right, that's good. And then we'll leave the rest of it. I will put it on a future agenda. Once we get our appointment piece of it straightened out, I will keep you posted over the next couple of weeks when we get direction from the Select Board. And if they request a meeting or anything. Okay, does that sound like a plan?
Good.
So for this evening, Kevin Mello will be serving as the Chair for the remainder of the meeting here. And we will start with the public hearing for the zoning articles for Springtown Meeting of 2024. So if you want to go through your sheet there, Kevin, we have, I see that we have Brian on.
Brian's on. Excellent. Okay. Okay. So we need a motion to recess the Planning Board's regular meeting and open the public hearing regarding spring zone zoning articles for spring meeting, town meeting.
I made a motion.
Okay, I got a motion from Kevin Estes. And a second from Nick Cyclepatis. All in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
And then a motion to open the town, the the public meeting. I move.
Okay, so we have a motion to open the public hearing regarding Town Meeting Articles. Do I have a second?
Second, Kevin.
A motion by Kevin Estes, second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Hey. So the public hearing regarding spring zoning, Springtown Meetings, zoning articles for 2024 is called to order. Christine?
It is for the adoption of accessory dwelling unit bylaw and associated bylaw section deletions and amendments. We have on Town Council this evening to speak to all of it. You have been working on it for the past few months, just for the for the information of the public. Brian, you want to go from there?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. You have, what I hope before you is most recent revisions based upon the last discussion that we had. I'm hoping it's in line with what you guys had wanted. I know that it was it was a little difficult the last meeting with me being able to partake, but I hope based on what I was able to get and Christine's notes, this is reflective of what you wanted. I do have two minor comments that I noticed after the fact that I think should be tweaked. And we can talk about them at some point, but I thought it made sense first off to see if you guys had any major concerns or questions or comments that you wanted to bring up based upon what you have in front of you.
I thought it was very good, Brian. I thought to my way of thinking, that's what we had talked about all of us.
And I can say I did not receive any comments from board members prior to tonight's meeting.
Then I'll I'll just go through then quickly my additional comments. If you want to go to it is the last provision of the Warren Article before the addition of Article 50. So it's the last minor tweak. It's the to the definition of detached accessory structure. I realize that this never got tweaked after the discussion of adding back in the the right to do a detached structure on the preexisting to do a accessory apartment, preexisting detached structures. And so I think this should get tweaked. The step in it should get should get tweaked so that the end of it, it says except is expressly otherwise allowed in Article 50. To make clear that if Article 50 says, yes, you can have an accessory dwelling unit and attached structure, then it's allowed. Otherwise, it's not.
I'm looking for that. I'm having a hard time. One of my board members helped. I can't see where you're talking, Brian. Where were you talking?
I'm talking about before we get to the the new Article 50 in the Warren Article.
Okay.
At the beginning of the article, there's a number of little tweaks to various provisions throughout the bylaw to make sure that there's no inconsistencies. So the last minor tweak changes the definition of detached accessory structure.
Okay.
And what I think is to account for the fact that you're still allowing ADUs in preexisting detached structures, I think that definition of detached accessory structure should have a a little provision at the end that says except is expressly otherwise allowed in Article 50. To make clear that if Article 50 does say, yes, in this situation, you can have an ADU and it has structure, then it's allowed. Otherwise, it's not.
Okay. I got it.
And again, that's that's because I I it was an oversight, my part to update that definition after to to be in accordance with what you guys wanted from our last conversation. So that's not in my mind a substantive change. That's making it's a final tweak to make sure that what you wanted is is done. The only other minor thing is that once you're into Article 50 itself, if you go into 375-50.2 in paragraph D, it says, except this provide in 375-50.2D. That should say 2E. And that's just a typo.
That's fine.
And other than that, the only the I had just had a couple of questions in my comments. The first one being you had moved away in general from requiring a review of of particular architectural styles and compatibilities between the ADU in the in the main structure. You seem to feel like that was not something you wanted to get the granularity of. I wanted to point out that there is language in here that's simply a continuation of existing language in which any reconstruction of the preexisting detached structure. If you're allowing the old detached structure as part of turning into an ADU, if you're allowing it to be raised and reconstructed, that it has to be architecturally compatible. So that is an existing provision in the current bylaw, and I've carried it over, but I wanted you guys to be able to think about whether you wanted to keep that, given everywhere else you've moved away from having provisions relating to architectural standards and compatibility. And that that's just a little farther down in that same section. It's in paragraph E. 375-50.2. So again, there's not, as it stands now, that provision is just a carryover from the current bylaw. But I just wanted you guys to make sure that you still want it in, given that you've been moving away from architectural standards in general.
Right, and we moved away, but didn't we reference consistent with? I mean, we moved away from setting a standard, but at the same time, aren't we putting the burden on them to maintain some sense of consistency with the existing structure?
Well, so 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 this so with respect to the where it's an attached structure. I think your thought process was is obviously if it's an attached structure, whether it's part of the main structure or attached by a connected breezeway, that there's obviously going to be an architectural consistency because it's a single building. This provision is the only provision here regarding architectural standards now, and it's a preexisting provision and it deals with detached structures. So if you keep it in, you're not changing anything, but I wanted you guys just to make sure that you given that we're overhauling this, is that something you wanted to keep? Since you've moved away from worrying about architectural standards when it's not a detached structure. There's no right or wrong answer here. I just wanted to make sure it was a discussion that had been undertaken before we continued with the existing language.
My feeling is I'd like to keep it in. I don't know what the rest of you think, but I think that it should be kept in.
Yeah, I'm not really having a problem with the way it's worded because it says you know, compatible with the existing single family. It's not saying compatible with the neighborhood or so if you have a modern home with an old building, you could make the new building look modern to to match the house. Am I correct?
Yes, and my my recommendation would be is if you're going to keep this language in, then let's be consistent elsewhere. And as I've noted, I think you would want to have similar language when you're allowing the creation of a new subsidiary structure connected by a breezeway. Do you want to have that same language mixture, that subsidiary structure that is built for the first time? Connected by a breezeway?
Opinion that it should say it should say architecturally compatible with the single family structure?
I there's no right or wrong answer. I'm just putting it out there that do you want to have that consistency or do you not care?
I think we do care. I think that's why in simple terms, we use the phrase consistent with, but you know, whatever architectural integrity or how you want to reference it, from my perspective, I thought we did care as a board.
I do. I care. I think it should be.
We we care. I I think we agreed that that we care that that the the structure should be in the same general look and feel as as the original structure.
Right.
Okay, so how you want to word that is is really up to you.
What I would do then is I would take the language in E6 regarding architecturally compatible, and I would just copy and paste that language into D3. And have it in both locations.
Good. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, I feel that's.
Very good.
And then the last question I have then is, oh, there's two more. I should never say last because there's always another one. Do you I I want to make sure that I'm understanding what you want precisely with respect to parking areas? Obviously, you were very clear. You want one driveway. You don't want multiple curb cuts. You want to have a single driveway. Do you want to make sure there's one parking area for both dwellings? Or can there be like an offshoot parking area for the ADU?
No, it could be as long as it's used as long as it's using the same curb cut. If it's a circular driveway or you know, if the accessory dwelling units off to the side, if if it hammerheads off to the side a little bit.
Or curves around the back or something. That was why, because as as written, it says there's a single parking area, and I didn't know if that was more restrictive than than you would desire.
Well, by single so sorry for referencing it this way, but the fact that it's an accessory dwelling unit and it's not a duplex and or separately feeded structure. Don't we want the asphalt to be contiguous in nature regardless if it's a horseshoe with a parking square at one side or or somewhere just contiguous asphalt so that it appears to represent a single family yet? Compared to multiple curb cuts and or multiple pads of asphalt that are not contiguous in nature? I don't think that's going to be very attractive. I don't know. I I like contiguous asphalt regardless of the configuration. I'm open to a horseshoe with a parking court off of one side to accommodate for additional vehicles, but I don't like the idea of multiple pads of asphalt individual that appears.
No, they would be all be connected because we'd only have one curb cut.
If the question, I guess, it I think do you want it so that you have one curb cut with a driveway, but then off the driveway, there can be sort of multiple ranches to different parking areas? Or do you want to be that the driveway goes to a single parking area that serves both dwellings?
I I think that could be limited in some circumstances.
Yeah, I would. I don't see the benefit of that. I see that as a detriment. We we can't foreshadow where there's going to be 30 feet of an aluminum handicap ramp. If it's going to be a straight line or an L shape, we I think we're setting ourselves up for additional issues and making it more difficult.
And by saying a single curb cut, we eliminate, would we eliminate any circular driveways? That that by saying single curb cut, Brian, would that eliminate someone having a
So we don't we don't say single curb cut. We we don't say single curb cut. We say a single driveway. So I think, you know, the building inspector could say, you know, a horseshoe is one driveway. You or as opposed to two separate curb cuts going in two separate locations is obviously two driveways. So we we were intentionally broader with the language to avoid that.
Okay.
Accident or restriction. So the the question then is, as it currently is stated, it says a single parking area, so serve both the single family residence and the ADU. Are you fine with that? Do you want it to be clear that it can be two separate parking areas off the same driveway? Or do you not want to have the bylaw say anything regarding this and just simply say there has to be one driveway and leave it at that?
I do. I do like the idea of the driveway being known as one and the asphalt being contiguous in nature, not separate pads. Or I I just, I think it may, I I I'm struggling to define how, but I like the idea of the driveway in increased capacity to accommodate the ADU is still reflective in nature of a single family dwelling. And to get away from starting to look like multiple units based on parking courts and where the cars are, but I don't want to be limiting either to the residents and what they may, their needs are going to be vast and different, and I'm not sure that we can predict in this meeting what everyone needs are going to be.
Well, they need a lot.
Well, I mean, presently, don't they have the right to, subject to the impervious surface limitations? They have the right to build whatever driveway they want, right?
They can make it bigger. They can make it larger.
As as long as they stay within the limits of impervious surface.
Yeah, this this is, there's no right or wrong answer. This is about how much do you want to enforce the facade of it being solely a single family residence? From an external view perspective, that that's all this is about.
Well, one driveway, doesn't that kind of do it, Brian? We just save one driveway?
There's no right or wrong answer. I can't tell you what's all I'm pointing out is this is, this is a a spot where you guys should be clear of what you want. And whatever you want is fine from my perspective. I don't know if it'll be fine for town meeting, but that's not my job to figure out.
I I have, I I'm comfortable with saying this on my behalf, that in the in the example of an attached ADU, the driveway should be one.
Right.
And perhaps there should be language that allows for the detached ADU to have a separate and distinct driveway if if it meets the standards, but for those that are attached, I do like the idea of maintaining some control of one driveway. We're trying to preserve so many other things.
You could also, you could also massage the difference there and say that you always have to have one driveway. But if it's a detached structure, you can have multiple parking areas. If it's an attached structure, you have one parking drive. That's that's another way, because the detached structure could be so far away that it's impractical to have a single parking area.
Agreed.
So that that's one way to sort of and and then the the multiple parking area on a single lot scenario is already limited in terms of the number of times it could possibly happen because you have to have a separate structure before 20 years ago. So you know, it's that's not a scenario that's going to crop up over and over and over again. It's a it's a specific subset that you're allowing, and then you're allowing this extra parking allowance on top of it. That's one way you could go if you wanted to.
I like it.
Hey, anyone else?
I I already said I I agree with that.
Good. Okay.
All good.
All right, very good.
All right. So so then the last question is, at least from my perspective, and I actually do believe it's the last question now, is in terms of the requirement that except for the live-in support, that anyone in either of the units, they all have to be related to each other. Do you want to further define what related to each other means? Like, you know, do you care if it's second cousins? Do you care if it's, you know, third cousin wants removed?
I think we're getting into micromanagement at that point and
Yeah, so well, so the the only, if you're going to draw a line, the only thing I would draw it essentially is first relations. Like oftentimes in various statutes, regulations, bylaws, if it's a if it's designed for familial connection, it's like, you know, aunts, uncles, cousins, you have to use grandparents, grandkids, and that's 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 the boundary. And if you're not going to sit there, then there's probably no point in setting it.
I don't think we should set it.
I agree with Margaret.
Something we can't manage or control.
Right.
Correct.
Who are we fooling? Ourselves.
Well, all that's happening is you're leaving to the discretion of the zoning enforcement to decide if they're related to each other. That's what you're doing. If you're not going to find it, then he's going to determine it based on his best estimate.
Does this have leave room for a live-in caretaker?
So the one exception is
Not get related, like hired, but
Yeah, so that so so there's already the exception that you can have the one unrelated caretaker living there. And that's the explicit exception. And other than that, who's ever living in the particular unit have to all be related. You guys haven't further defined what related means.
Okay, all right.
Sorry. Yeah, so with that caveat, you've said everyone has to be related in a unit. And the question is, do you want to be more detailable what that means, or do you want to leave it to the ZO?
I I think it's fine.
We, I don't I don't see any purpose in defining related beyond just related. Yep, I'm good too.
Right, because you can be related by marriage, you can be, I mean, it's, you know.
Sure, and and the way I, it it to give you, if if you want, said, if you said, hey, we wanted to find it further, what I would suggest is first relations, whether that's by blood, by marriage, or by uh adoption, that that's how I would that's an easy definition to do and and you, and it's a pretty narrow subset then, if you wanted to, there's no obligation for you to, you can leave it to the Z E O.
I I don't want to do it, I don't know how my board members feel, I think just related is enough. And when they go for the permit, I'm sure that our new building commissioner is going to ask them.
Uh, agree.
With that present time, and then and then I have a question. When there's, when there's no more relations to occupy the unit, the unit's not rentable?
That's what you guys have decided, is that it that it's, the goal is not for it to be Airbnb.
That's correct, we are not doing this for short-term rentals, if somebody puts on the application, uh, the reason or the purpose of this it is not for them to generate income as a short-term rental.
I'm not here to promote short-term rentals, we've had this conversation numerous times, but I I am here to ask myself what happens twenty-four months from now, seventy-two months from now, when the unit's no bit, no longer being occupied or used either um with its intent um or or with a relative because of the nature of life changing and so on, but that's probably a conversation for down the road.
That becomes an enforcement issue at that point. That's, that's would be my thought. You know, if the neighbors start having people come in every weekend, party, different cars from out of state. That could become an enforcement issue.
I know it's not a place, but not not all short-term rentals are, not all short-term rentals are catastrophic and not all have the same purpose, uh, you know, to party and 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 leave the plastic bottles on the sidewalk, I just don't know. Are we going to have to address this down the road? Our ADU is going to come back based on use down the road? Maybe it's not this board, but.
Don't, don't forget, we do have ADUs now, this is um, so we are not reinventing the wheel here. We are modifying what is existing.
Right.
To help uh step up the needs, the growing needs and quite honestly, to 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 honor the the people that will be living in them, because I think it's almost criminal expecting someone to go from a twenty-four hundred square foot colonial to six hundred and fifty foot, square foot you know, bedroom, one bedroom, it it's embarrassing to expect them to have to downsize that much. So this is a nice th- this is a nice way for us to boost that and make it more realistic for ADUs to be livable for either older generations or younger generations.
I I don't, I don't disagree with anything that's brought us to this point, obviously, I was a big proponent of it and I'm I'm strongly in support of it. I just, I'm really concerned about down the road and probably don't have to worry about it today. But I didn't know, based on the relationship and based on everything we've defined so far, um, are we being myopic by not brainstorming or thinking or projecting what the next discussion is going to be about these ADUs that are going to be constructed based on the principles that we're discussing now? And how life changes and how they'll have to be used or not later? We don't have to hash it out now, just just curious what everyone's thought was, because I got a feeling if we're here together long enough, we'll have this conversation again.
Well, we do want to address it now, because I mean, you are thinking it, I know we're probably all thinking it. And we want to make, we want our article to succeed at town meeting. And if that's not addressed adequately now, uh, this may not pass town meeting. So, Brian, what are your thoughts? Uh, is there enough meat to the this bylaw that the zoning enforcement officer would be able to enforce our intent at this time?
I mean, are you going to catch everyone? No, but I mean, I I think if, if the if there's no, no one as a resident living in the unit, that's a pretty obvious tell. If there is a different person using as a residence every other year, that's a pretty obvious tell. So, I mean, it's, no zoning bylaw is foolproof, I'll I'll also just so you guys know, like, you know, you think about in the future, you know, um and Christine, I actually, I talked about this a little earlier today, um, the governor has proposed um in the last few months, um as part of a major bill, um, adjusting uh ADU uh law in the state so that it's automatically allowed as a right in any um residential district. So, you know, that could, yeah, I have no idea if it's going to pass, it's, it's not anywhere close to that point. But if it did, it would completely overhaul what you guys are doing right now anyway. And we'd have to address that at that time. So I I don't, I don't think you guys should worry about that now, because there's always bills in the legislature to change different zoning things, and if you're trying to anticipate them and and uh be directly responsive to them, it's a fool's errand. Um, but just be aware that this is something that's being looked at the state level anyway. And in, there's a push for that. Um, and that may ultimately uh tie your hands in terms of what you want to be able to limit anyway.
Well, I have a question, Brian. If if uh someone builds this and after four or five years, unfortunately, someone leaves or has to go to a nursing home or passes away, and then they want to lease this to uh someone else who's not related, and they go to the building commissioner and he says no, then they just go to the CBA. Am I correct?
Um, so, well, so what's interesting is, I don't think they'd have to go to the building commissioner, they don't need permission after it's built. They just, if they get caught, they get caught.
Okay.
Like, they're not, like, I, as written, they don't have to go inform the building commissioner each time they have a new tenant.
No, I just meant, okay.
But but what was, would be happening presumably is, you know, the building commissioner would know where the ADUs are. Yeah, from the Director of Inspectual Services, uh, would know where the ADUs are and would be occasionally checking to see, like, residents is there and who's living there and seeing if there's in compliance, that that would be my presumption.
Well, my feeling is if somebody, if a neighbor complains, that that was what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, and that's possible too, as you guys have written it, you know, say that keeps home builds it for grandma or for
Right.
A child and, you know, after, you know, a couple of many years, that's no longer the necessary use, and there's no one else related that could, um, I want to point out, the way it's drafted, it's, it's not as restrictive as you think it is. What it says is, anyone in each unit has to be related to everyone else in that unit. So it could get rented out to a family.
Okay, that's it.
What it can't get rented out to is, you know, a bunch of singles or college students or short-term rentals. But it could get rented out long-term to a family that has no relation to the owner. And that's allowed under your language.
Then that's good.
What what you guys were interested in ensuring is that it's, it's long-term residents that are living there. So that it doesn't become a um a nuisance to the neighborhood, I think is what you guys were concerned about, not about the actual um relationship of the individuals in the unit to the homeowner itself.
Correct, I think that that was our exact intent.
Yep.
So. Okay.
So then I just, I just point out um that because of the fact that our definition of ADU is different from the state's definition. Um, you know, a few years ago, the state put a lot of new definitions into uh forty A, including a definition for ADUs. If you reflect that that state definition, then you can have ADU provisions passed at town meeting by majority vote. Because our definition does not meet the state's definition, most specifically because we exceed the square footage, state caps at nine hundred feet, nine hundred square feet, and you've exceeded that. Uh, because of that, any ADU provision still requires the traditional two-thirds vote at town meeting. Uh, so just be aware of that.
Even though we're being more generous.
Because the state limits ADUs to maximum nine hundred feet, if you want to take advantage of the majority vote option at town meeting.
Is that just the way the statute reads? Is that the only advantage?
That's the only advantage, that you can, that's easier to pass it, yeah.
I I feel confident, I I feel comfortable. I certainly would hope the public would pass this at town meeting.
As as I said, in the future, we may see a bill coming out that doesn't simply say, if you, if you treat ADUs like we say, then it's easier to get it passed, you might see a bill coming out that says you have to treat ADUs this way. But the state isn't currently saying that, they're just providing their own definition and then saying if you use ours, then it's easier to get something passed at town meeting.
It just surprised that it's not, if they, you know, if we don't theirs at a minimum. You know, here we are being more generous, you know, I would think that we would have the same uh, enjoy the same privilege if it was equal to or greater than nine hundred square feet.
Plymouth is doing it now, I was talking to one of the selectmen and they are at nine hundred feet. They're new, yeah, their town meeting.
Yeah, what what the state defines ADUs as is nine hundred feet or half the square footage of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. So if you have a five thousand, if you have, if you have a five thousand square foot house, it's still capped at nine hundred feet. If you have a twelve hundred square foot house, you're capped at six hundred feet.
I'm not, I'm not convinced, uh, if we changed and and went with nine hundred in an effort to benefit from the majority, I I'm not convinced that that would capture that, I think anybody who votes against this is going to vote against it out of some, for some other reason other than the square footage. I think we've worked.
And I'm not, I'm not telling you guys to change that, I'm just letting you know, if you're worried about, you know, this squeaking by, that is a way to to lower the vote threshold you need.
That's great information. Margaret, what do you think compared to Kevin's opinion? Do you think that hundred square feet is going to make a big difference in the vote?
Well, I I just think it's going to be easier than getting two thirds if we vote nine, and I, as again, I was talking to the selectman, you know, one of the selectmen, and they're at nine hundred, and they're doing the same thing with the the ADUs, okay, in Plymouth. So, they're coming in at nine, uh, I don't know. Uh, I think, I think mostly everyone is is probably gonna like this, but if you don't get the two thirds, it's stuck.
Right, right. So. So Brian, are there any other parts of of what we're proposing that would also require a two-thirds vote, or is this the only trip?
Uh, the the only thing is you have to meet the state's definition of ADU, that's it. And and the only distinction I can see between what our, ours is and what theirs is, is about the max square footage. Everything else, we we would have to tweak language slightly, that is not really of any substantive concern, it's more just like, like terms of phrase that like, oh, they want to say it, say this instead of we said this, but it has no substantive distinction, the only distinction I can tell is the square footage.
So Brian, is it the same definition? Is it the the, it would be a maximum nine hundred square feet of habitable gross floor area?
What the stat, what the state defines as is, is not larger than than uh is, is not larger than the floor air, in floor area than half the floor area of the principal dwelling, or nine hundred square feet, whichever is less.
Okay.
So this, that's how the state defines it.
So if we build nine hundred square feet, ten feet away from the house, but now it has to be connected to the house by a breezeway that's ten feet long and five feet wide, wh- can we consider it, can we?
So the state's definition does not clarify what the square footage is. If that's fully unhelpful, you know. They don't, is it, is it habitable area, is it gross area? The the state doesn't make that clear.
So period, nine hundred square foot of the addition. It doesn't say.
It 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 said, just says it can't be larger in floor area than half the floor area, the principal dwelling, or nine hundred square feet, whichever is small, that's all it says.
So if they have to build a a fifty square foot vestibule to connect the house, that's part of the nine hundred square feet.
Presumptive weeks.
There's no way for us to presume it any other way or to word it any way that we could buy, because I I'm fine with that, one of the reasons.
It, yeah, go ahead, sir.
It's all right, one of the reasons we went to the thousand square feet was to get to to count in any type of connections, because we don't want them to touch.
Yes, but we don't want long, long connections either, uh, Kevin, we discussed that, we don't.
No, no, but it I like the way we said habitable gross floor area. And if we went nine hundred habitable gross floor area and somebody went in with nine hundred square foot box with a fifty square foot connection, let's face it, ten feet i- is not a long. You know, I'm not talking about, you know, so, but that's still fifty square feet.
Right.
The statutory definition is ambiguous, I'll I'll say that, because what they say is the ADU either has to have its own separate entrance or it has to have a shared corridor entrance with the principal dwelling. So by implication, is the shared corridor therefore not part of the square footage? It's possible. But what I can tell you is, however you want to interpret the state's definition, you have to copy and paste it directly, you can't put any of your clarifying language in.
So we can't add habitable gross.
No, you cannot, you have to define it as they define it. So, you know, that's and there's no, there's no, the only, the benefit you're getting is a lower threshold, and I can't tell you what the value of that is, for getting it passed. The irony is that the state allows you to be more restrictive than that if you want to, you just can't be less restrictive to meet their definite, so you can limit it at six hundred square feet.
Which is normally the opposite. Normally, you know, okay. I I really want to hear the board's thoughts on that.
My gut tells me that we've put a lot of thought into this. As far as I know, nobody on this board is building an ADU, we did it for the citizens of our town, we thought long and hard about family members, the ill, the elderly, the college students. We've done it with great intent to this point. And um, I can't say that I have a lot of town meeting exposure by any means, I've looked at the rosters, I see there's quite a few people there. I like the idea of sticking with what we got for all the reasons that have gotten us to this point. So I think a hundred square feet is a big deal. It's not in most applications, but it can be depending on the nature of the need of the ADU. And I'm thinking more along the lines of disability in hospital equipment and so on, so I I'm one hundred percent content if the board decides to move forward with how we have it.
Margaret?
Well, I think, you know, I'm a town meeting member, uh, I think Kevin you are, um. So I think that if they stop, then we'll have to get up and defend it for for a thousand square feet, just for the reasons that Nick said. Okay, if you have somebody elderly in there, you have a hospital bed, you have wheelchairs, you may have other equipment that you need that a hundred square feet for someone who is disabled to me, means a lot, so if we see that, if they're asking questions and they're not happy, well, then maybe we have to get up and tell them why we went over the state's nine hundred to a thousand. So I think, let's keep it at a thousand and see what happens, we're willing to defend it at town meeting if we have to. What do you think, Kevin?
Okay, Kevin? I agree with Margaret, but I've been a town meeting member for fifteen years, I guess, and I've seen some really weird things either that that should have passed, get shot down, uh, or passed that shouldn't have passed, simply because you had one persuasive speaker that had some kind of an agenda, who knows what it was. Um, and and uh, that that's why if it's something's really important and it's two thirds vote.
that, that's why if it's something's really important and it's two thirds vote, uh, I, I, I hold my breath. You know, and I just, I just hope that, that it comes out the way it's supposed to come out and, and there's not a whole lot of, uh, um, discussion about it. A- and so I, I, I honestly, I think our, our, uh, I agree with Nick, our, our intent has been pure on this. Um, and, and, uh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling like we should leave it the way it is a- and, and Margaret's right. If, if it starts to go sideways, then it's incumbent upon us to get up and defend it and say, guys,
Yep.
This, this is why we're doing this. This is, there's, there's no, no ulterior motive. There's, there's nothing wrong here. We're, we're trying to do a good thing for, for the town.
Okay, very good. Um, and, and I agree with everybody that, that, um, yes, we may have to get up and defend it, uh, if people stop picking it apart. Um, we're doing it for the right reasons. A- and I'm pretty passionate about it. So if we have to, we have to. So let's leave it the way it is.
Good.
If we have to. You can always be in attendance too, Nick, if you want to.
No, I'm happy to be. I'm happy to be. I plan on it.
Tuesdays are good, so.
I, I'm happy to be and I plan on it. So I think the defense, I, 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 I don't, I don't know what what the plan would be to defend it, but I think if we reference materials and the footprint that they occupy, those who may need such examples will cl- clearly and quickly realize that the square footage we're trying to defend gets occupied quickly by some pieces of equipment that are common in an elderly's home.
Right.
Okay.
My mother's, my mother's bedroom was big for a while. I'm talking on a personal note. It's no longer big and it's not because she collects things. But when you add a breathing machine and you add an oxygen tank and you add a walker and you add this and you add that, you quickly realize you lost a lot of room.
That's right.
Okay. Brian, what else? Anything else?
Uh, that, that's it. I, I just, uh, you guys have, have, uh, made some minor tweaks based on where our discussion was. So if I could just get a, a vote affirming that, um, you want those tweaks included and I'll finalize the warrant for you.
Okay, so first, uh, being that this is a public hearing, um, and I, I don't see anybody out there. Chad, if you could let us know, I'm looking to ask if the public has anybody looking to speak either for or against our discussion today.
I'm not seeing anybody else either.
I am not seeing anybody either for or against. If, and we don't have a waiting room.
We don't have a waiting room.
Uh, therefore, I would like to proceed to a vote of the board.
On a motion to support that Brian makes the changes as described.
I, I think what would be helpful is because we went through a bunch of things and some of you said yes, some of you said no. So I'll just go through and list the things I'm going to tweak and then you guys can just motion to approve those based on what I've said. And that might be the simplest way to make sure we're all on the same page.
Wonderful.
Um, I'm going to, um, tweak the definition of detached accessory structure to account for, um, pre-existing detached structures being able to have, um, accessory lung units in them. I'm going to fix the, um, scrubberner's error in three seventy-five dash fifty point two D. Um, I am going to, um, add the architectural compatibility language to the attached structures that's already in the detached structures. Um, and I'm going to, um, clarify that, um, there needs to be a single parking area for attached structures, but there can be two parking areas for detached structures.
Okay.
I'll, uh, make a, a motion that, uh, that Brian makes the changes as, as described.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion to approve as Brian described from Kevin Estes, second by Nick Cyclepatis. All in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes.
And then I'm assuming you guys aren't going to need to see a new draft with those changes that, um, you guys are good at this point, or we can have another hearing date if you want, so you can see the final draft, or you can just recommend the town meeting with the assumption that I'll be making those changes we just discussed.
No, I, I think it would be nice not just for us to have it for our records because I know I'll be going with Christine. And that can come from Christine, I guess. Um, because we have a finance board meeting and a select board meeting on the week of the twenty-second. So that way we have a clean coffee to present.
Sure, no, I, I'm going to provide you, my point is, I don't, you guys, I don't think you guys need to hold another public hearing date during.
I don't feel that way.
Yeah, I think you can just approve it now, subject to those changes.
Right.
I would assume, right? Yeah.
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 Um, yeah, so, um, because I don't, this is that vote you just gave me, it's just direction for me to revise it. It wasn't technically of the
Okay.
To approve and recommend.
We'll do a vote right now to, uh,
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to recommend this article with the current changes, with the recent changes to town meeting?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Margaret Sweet. Can I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, second by Nick Cyclepatis. All in favor, Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Excellent. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Alright, um, anything else you guys need from me?
No, you did a nice job, Brian. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, I know, you know, originally the hearing was on for tweaking articles thirty-two, thirty-three. Um, and I know Christine talked to you about how I felt it was necessary to, to pull them into the fall. I can talk to you about that if you want a little bit, or you can just, you know, we can hold a, a, a meeting on them afterwards, you know, separate from town meeting stuff. I'm happy to do that as well. Um, but, um, it was just, I was worried that the unintended consequences of rushing it through was going to be worse than um, any of the intended, um, clarifications that were going to be made. Um, and I wanted to make sure that we'd had a chance to discuss that in detail. So, um, that was my call.
Okay, so this will be the only article that we'll have for the
Yeah.
Town meeting.
Yeah, it's my recommendation that the changes to articles thirty-two, thirty-three be held to the fall.
Okay. All right, then. Very good. Thank you. Um, I think what.
Is there anything else I need to say on for Christine or no?
No, I think we're good, actually. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Right.
So I will need, um, a motion in a second to close the public hearing and resume the regularly scheduled meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty-four of the Dartmouth Plan Board, so.
Make that motion, Kevin, that we close the public hearing and move to the scheduled April eighth meeting of the planning board.
I have a motion and a second motion by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Excellent. Onto administrative items. Um, minutes, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions, any reviews needed?
Look fine to me.
Motion to accept and file?
Okay, second?
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin Estes to acknowledge and file, a second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes.
So these are actually to approve. Acknowledge and file is for the cor- correspondence. So you have approved these, right?
Yes, we have.
The minutes, yes.
Okay.
And on to correspondence, City of Fall River, Freetown, New Bedford in Westport. Any discussion?
Make the motion to accept and file.
Okay, motion by Nick Cyclepatis?
Second.
Second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. FYI and new business. Um, zoning board of appeals, legal ads.
We had two, um, special, uh, special permits that were decisions. Um, one was for one-one-one-five Tucker Road, um, and the other one was for um, twenty Charles Joseph Drive. Um, and there, the decisions are attached in your files, um. The, uh, the Charles, Charles Joseph Drive was for, um, an accessory structure, poolhouse in a single residence B, which does not comply with the zoning bylaw. Um, Article eight, and then the, um, Tucker Road one was for a to construct a two-car garage with half, half bath in a, in the single residence, uh, district, which did not comply with zoning either. That's pretty straightforward. Um, there are no other things from them. I would say that was it.
Okay. Any, um, subcommittee? Anyone?
No, I have a meeting tomorrow for my, uh, community, so community preservation is tomorrow.
Okay, anyone else? I know I had nothing, so. Okay, Christine, planners review for.
Um, so we did have a technical reviewer meeting, um, on April second. We did have a, a conceptual OSRD application that came before us. There will be quite a few revisions to it. Um, the engineer had just come in initially to get comments because of, of what they were trying to do in this particular case. We did get some, um, positive feedback from a number of different department heads, um. In particular, this one is within the, uh, district, the fire district two, um, so there'll be some, uh, some specific requirements with regard to the, to, uh, having adequate water storage in the area, Cistron is what it's called. Um, and then there was some, uh, some discussion about, um, the open space parcels in that particular area, um. So we'll see how that goes, but right now I don't have an application before us anymore. Again, we just brought it to, um, that. The other one was, um, we also had a commercial, um, potential commercial development on Fonce Quanah Road that somebody is looking at on the site of the former Rose Auto Motor Motors or Rose Auto. Um, it's another car dealership and they're proposing to have some storage of cars in the main building in the front of the lot. And then they're proposing to maybe have some access in the back of the lot from, um, they're working with one of the property owners on Ventura Drive because there is extensive wetlands on that. It's a long, thin, skinny site, narrow site. Um, so they're trying to, uh, determine um, potential options for that. Um, again, they received quite a bit of feedback and they will be back, um, too at some point. So those were the two technical reviewer meeting, um, articles that we had. Um, as far as the planning board goes, we're spending a lot of time, obviously, right now with all of the town meeting material. Um, Ryan and I have had a couple of conversations about different, different things with regard to the, um, the summary, um, articles. So I concur with his, his take on, on how we move forward with those, not at this time. Um, and, um, we're working, uh, Ross is working diligently with me on doing some of the, um, mapping updates on, on the computer system, both in the online portal for the permits, um, and then some of the, the G I S stuff that will be going forward. So we have some of those big things going. And then obviously we see mostly, we're seeing a lot of commercial redevelopment right now, which is very good. Um, so we're kind of just keeping everything moving. That's it for us. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
So Christine, when you're looking at our packet and you see Audi V W Dartmouth in car wash, is that all part of that conceptual plan that?
So that's all, that's all conceptual is, is, I had thought I had Ross send that another day. Did he put that in this one instead?
Uh, that is in our.
That's in your packet. Okay, yeah. So anything, so those last two things, anything that's not prior to the minutes on any, anything is always things that maybe have come before technical reviewer. Um, so it's not for you to, to review it this time. It's just to kind of keep you informed about what's going on. Um, I know that there were some rumors going around that there was going to be a Trader Joe's. Everybody's all excited about Chick-fil-A, um, you know, all of those different things. So we're just trying to keep you abreast of everything that we're looking at. But again, some of these technical reviewer things never actually come to fruition. Um, but at least to give you a heads up. So in case you see something and, um, typically what we're trying to do is get them out to you beforehand. So in case you have any questions about anything um, that we can ask those questions at the, you know, you'll get your chance later on, obviously. But if there's something you're really concerned about, if we want to have any, you know, if you want to have any input sooner rather than later, I can ask those questions at the meeting. Uh, so we might tweak that, we might tweak the timing of that a little bit. Um, how you get them.
Chris- Christine, is, is it, um, is it appropriate that I, that I talk about the cistern that you brought up for the, uh?
If you keep, if you keep it general, it's okay? Yes.
Well, my general feeling on, on that because, uh, I'm out here where there are no, uh, there's no water out here. And I feel that, um, maybe we need to change the rules on these subdivisions that when they come into an area uh, that, uh, there is no water available. Um, a couple of years ago, we had an awful dry summer, okay, and some of the wells went and everything else. I think maybe we should look at requiring cisterns on, um, all subdivisions where water is not available, thirty thousand gallons. That's just something maybe for the board to think about. People to think about because I think it's a very good idea. And I think your insurance will go down too. Your insurance costs will go down.
Oh, if you, if you require that.
Have a cistern, yeah.
Okay, so I, I mean, we're not seeing very many large subdivisions anymore, but I guess to have it in place, we are, we had started to work on the subdivision regulations at one point, a number of pages, so that would be a good, I mean, that wouldn't be an unreasonable thing. And again, it was something that the fire chief in this particular case, because each, when, whenever we have a technical reviewer meeting, they look at the agendas and then they decide if, if it's in their district, if they want to come or not, um. So, so that they're all informed, um.
So.
So, the, the fire chief who brought it up this time. You know.
So I'm not really familiar. I mean, I, I know the term. I have a general idea. I mean, are you talking about a five thousand gallon underwater storage tank? When you say cistern, are you talking about a retention pond?
It's like a re- a big retention pond. You know, you know, there was one, the old, uh, school, um, the old school at Russell Smith's Road had one. They had a cistern, okay? Um.
So what prevents the water from evaporating in, in the heat of the summer or?
Well, I, I think this is just my thoughts. I don't know enough about it, which I'm going to start to learn. I think that now that we have drainage when we do it, when we do a subdivision and we have, uh, those drainage ponds that we have to have, I would think that we would have the cistern, the water go into the cistern, okay? Uh, which might eliminate some of those ponds. I'd have to talk, we'd have to talk to D P W too. And so, um, all the water would, would go there.
And it would be retained. It would not have.
It would not go on.
Feet out.
Retained, yes.
But eventually it could dry up. I- if there's a drought, it could dry up.
Oh, it could, but thirty thousand gallons is a lot of a lot of, uh, water.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't sound, I mean, the, the negative side sounds like the, the mosquitoes that may breed or the, the animals that may attract. Um, but okay, it seems simple enough.
Well, a- actually, I think, I think what we're talking about is, is the ability to, to have a container that's, that's not going to be subject to evaporation, that, uh, the water is fed in and it, it's got some sort of a cap from the stamp. So, so that prevents evaporation, i- it prevents mosquitoes, it prevents, uh, the, the issues that, uh, that, that would render it unusable. uh, that, that would render it unusable.
So I can reach out to the fires to get some additional information for you all about, because maybe the, 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 uh, you know, maybe the technology has improved in such a way, you know, or maybe they use something different, at least to get you some, uh, details of what they're, what they're looking to do. And I think, um, it was, uh, Steve Giosa, who was the engineer on this particular project, so I know, um, uh, he was working with the, with the fire chief in this particular case to come up with some things, so we can see what, what else is out there. You know, like I said, it might have changed quite a bit over the years.
So it is, it is defined by Webster as a tank. Water storage tanks. To store water.
Westport does it now, uh, Kevin. I think Westport.
Okay, well, I certainly can find out about that soon enough.
To put it in the perspective, I just did a little amount, the thirty-two thousand gallons is a twenty-five by fifty pool at three and a half feet deep, to give you an idea of what size container you're talking about for plus or minus thirty thousand gallons.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea, Margaret, if we know there is uh, uh, areas of, uh, of need. Uh, you know, and like you said, from an insurance perspective, that I don't see why we wouldn't address it as a board. If it's gonna resolve an issue that we know is present, it's not an issue that might happen, it's one that's present.
Right.
I think it's important. I really do.
Christine, do we have the right at this time to just add that to, make somebody add that to a plan? Or do we have to have bylaws put in place and change?
So we would put it into our subdivision regulations. Steve is going to work with the fire chief in this particular case as he moves forward with his project. You know, it was concerned, I mean, you know, I, I guess I don't know if the fire chief not signing off on a whole subdivision would stop the subdivision. That I don't know yet. You know, because the, the engineer was agreeable to doing it, so unless for some reason his applicant balks at it or something, I mean, it's in the best interest of, of the people in that development, right? This was a seven lot, seven lot subdivision. I mean, you don't want to build, um, you know, a million dollar house or whatever and have it burned to the ground, because you can't get any water out there. So, well, I mean, I think that that's why they'll do it, but I, I don't think it would hurt to have it in the subdivision regulations. You know, just in case, if you're not bored someday to have it, you know, a long-term thing that's protected. And then if some other board sees it differently, they can take it back out if they want. But at least, you know, if you know something about the need for it now, you know, get it in place and get it in writing, and then everybody knows right up front. There's no surprises, you know?
Okay, but for now, it seems like we might be able to use them based on the request of the fire department.
Yeah, yeah, right now, that's the way that this one is proceeding. Doesn't mean the next one wouldn't be different. I mean, every developer, every engineer who comes before us has a different, a different take on everything, so.
But we could always request it, Kevin, don't you think?
We can request anything.
Yeah, we can, we can always request it until we can change it and put it in that bylaws.
Correct.
But, but it does certainly carry more weight when it's coming from the fire chief requesting it.
Right.
So.
I mean, I have to say that they've all been very good, all of the fire chiefs and then the police chiefs and then the safety officer and stuff. Everybody has been pretty proactive about coming to the technical reviewer meetings and so, you know, we're, we're moving in the right direction as a, as a town entity, you know, or not that they're necessarily, you know, they're, they're their own pieces in some regard for the fire chiefs, but it's good that everybody comes together at one table to work. I'm really very happy with that, because that wasn't the way always here.
Well, I think Christine, then a lot of it is thanks to you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do we have, Christine, do we have, um, a new? I, I don't know what to call them, uh, commissioner, how's, you know, um?
Oh, we do. So we had somebody who started a couple of weeks ago. His name is, um, Randy Bassett. He is now being called, he's the director of inspectional services, which is what we had in the past and then went away. They each come in wanting a, a different name. He's a building commissioner. He came from, um, uh, from Fear Haven and prior to that from Brewster, I believe, and then there is a new, um, building inspector that has come in as well. I do not remember his name. His name might be Chris, um, and they had worked together in Brewster at one point. So they're kind of getting up to speed on everything. So. I'd say we're moving in the right direction. As you know, your former chair is on to the, uh, select board. I assume he had his first meeting tonight. It takes a couple of days to get the, uh, the vote kind of finalized and everything according to the, to the clerk's office, but it's a good thing.
It is.
A good direction.
We'll miss Chris.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Um, the board has been working incredibly well. And I'm looking forward to carrying that on. Um, I certainly ask any board member that if they know anybody, um, that might be up for the challenge to join us, please, you know, start talking to them. I think the board's a little bit light on the engineering side right now. Uh, if there's anyone, you know, somebody on our side that, that's an engineer that can talk to the engineers and understand and maybe explain it to us, that would be great. Basically, anybody at this point, though.
I have somebody that's, uh, that fits that bill and is interested.
Excellent, excellent. Um, so just, Christine, when you do hear about the, an announcement being made or a request being made, um, the request comes from the plant, from the select board.
Okay, yeah.
So if we can ask Sean to push that along, um, the request at least, so we can maybe get it out on the website, get it out on Dartmouth Weekly. Um, maybe D C T V can give us a quick flash every couple of hours on, on a commercial of some sort, if you would, just, uh,
Hint, hint, right?
Uh, you know, planning board in need of a new member. That would be wonderful.
Okay, that's good. Yes, they get our stuff. I can tell you after our last meeting with, uh, the Chick-fil-A things, that'll be on your next agenda. Again, that, that continued till then, um, they were putting out uh, messages while we were, while we were still completing the, uh, the meeting, so they definitely get the word out.
Yes. So. Alright.
So the next meeting is scheduled for April twenty-second. Um, I will have to go to the select board beforehand. I will keep you posted if we all need to be there or if we need to be in person, but as of right now, it is, um, it is via Zoom, your meeting. I will be with them at six thirty. I will try to get on the, the agenda that early there and then come over to your meeting, but you, um, should be able to get started via Zoom without me, if there are any issues.
Did, um, I know.
Work with Kevin. Let him know.
We, we had talked in the past that we had a four o'clock meeting with them. Were you scheduled for four o'clock?
Oh, four o'clock is for the, for the finance committee meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so the select board meeting is?
The select board is, is six thirty is what I'm assuming, and then finance committee is that same week, and that's the twenty-fifth, and that's at four o'clock.
Okay, so did you did you want me to go with you to the select board meeting or did you want to? We can talk about it, I guess, during the week.
Yeah, we can talk, we can talk about it. It was more the, the finance, but you can, um.
Some more of this, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Because Chris will be on the, he can't speak to behalf of it, but he at least knows what you were all trying to do. You know, he can't speak as a planning board member, but you know, he knows what we were, what we were doing and what we were working on. So he'll be sitting there. Okay.
Okay, very good.
Very good, alright.
So now to, uh, the last item on the agenda, number six.
I'll, I'll be the rookie, I'll be the rookie that does that. I'll make a motion that we adjourn this week.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion made by Nick Cycle Patus, second by Margaret Sweet.
Wait, whoa, whoa, hold on, hold on, hold on. I want to congratulate somebody that is a winner on our board. She went to election, she won. Margaret, congratulations. It was a tough battle.
Well, it was funny, I, I, I walked in to vote and I saw, uh, someone I used to be on the board with, uh, Joe Cosentino, and he said, well, gee, I, I, I congr, you know, good luck. I said, no, congratulate me, because there's no one else that's gonna run.
Nobody else wants the job, Margaret, that's why, right?
Margaret, I'm glad we're all smiling and laughing, because it was about a day before the election when I said to myself, should I have asked her if she wanted me to do anything? Congrats.
But thank you, Nick.
Yeah, yeah. Good to see everyone.
Very good.
Alright, so we have a motion to adjourn by Nick Cycle Patus, a second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Nick Cycle Patus?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Five more years, Margaret, five more years.
Well, I don't know, we'll see. A good night, everybody.
Good night, Christine.
Thank you.
Good night, all.